Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 12th, 2019. We will begin with closed session.
Item one on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiator Che Johnson pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding Employee Organization/Service Employees International Union.
Public comment, seeing none.
Item two, conference with labor negotiator Judy Hawkins pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding unrepresented employees.
Public comment, seeing none.
Item three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Michael Hatfield versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 19SC7564.
Public comment, seeing none.
Item four, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, three cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
Public comment, seeing none.
Item five, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4.
Public comment, seeing none. We will go to closed session. I would anticipate as being a little after nine o'clock by the time we return. Thank you. If you are able, will you please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and interest in all.
Morning, everybody. We will start off with announcements.
Report of today's closed sessions.
Closed session.
Item one, conference with labor negotiator Che Johnson pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding Employee Organization/Service Employees International Union, there was no reportable action taken. Item two, conference with labor negotiator Judy Hawkins pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding unrepresented employees, there was no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Michael Hatfield v. County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 19SC7564. On a motion by Supervisor Mills and a second by Supervisor Stopper and a unanimous vote of the board, the board directed the Office of County Counsel to file an appeal in this case. Item four, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, three cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, there was no reportable action taken. And item five, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, Supervisor Stopper recused himself from the discussion of this item and there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. Move on to announcements.
This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
So, fellow supervisors, nothing, staff, nothing. We will move on to general public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. I think everybody here understands the rules of not seeing, not too many new faces, but everyone have three minutes. Please address your comments to the board. I apologize, this is not a dialogue, so everybody's got three minutes. And Terry, lead us off. Good morning.
Good morning, Terry McBride, District 2. You know, the power to tax is the power to destroy. And I don't know if you noticed, you know, we had the stupid electric turn-off by a soulless, spiritless, spineless, lying corporation, but there are other sounds, and those sounds were the sound of gasp and thuds. That would be when people opened their property tax bill. Now, this has been going on for about three years in District 2, where our property land values have potentially gone over the top with dead trees, mine increased by 32 percent, my property taxes throughout this county, of which I own seven properties, so I won't tell you what my tax bill is, but it's not small, have gone from 32 percent to 110 percent. I am not alone. And I have to wonder, why is it my property taxes have gone up? Because I have thousands of dead trees. It must be the view. Well, we've got quite a lot of those dead trees down. I can see my neighbor's backyard, I never could see it before, I don't want to see it. And I can see a mountain that I really didn't care to see, I had my trees, that's what I love. And so, I went to the Assessor's Appeal hearing, and I'm going to play for you, this is public access, a recording. I'm hoping you'll hear it. So, they tax you for your view. Gosh dang. What is that about? So, and that is, you can get that copy, that's public record, you can get it from the Board of Supervisors Secretary over there in the Recorder's Office. We were told that there were computer problems when we met with Leslie Davis. You now have a group of approximately 200 really irritated people in this county, and we're getting more every day. And I'm highly recommending to each and every person to file an appeals with the Assessor's Appeal Board. I will say that when I went to that hearing, it was very cordial, it was very polite, I learned a lot, and I'm glad I took the time to do it. It was well worth my energy to do it, and I would hope that anybody questioning their tax bill will do the same. I have to wonder what's going on with our Assessor's Office. I'm going longer than I wanted to, but I'm wondering if we've got a rogue assessor, a corrupt assessor, or what in the heck is going on because people are opening these bills, gasping and thudding, because they're being taxed on their property when they didn't own it either.
Thank you, Terry. Good morning, Ms. Sanchez.
Hi. Good morning, Cynthia Sanchez, D2. To follow up on Terry's presentation of the recording, if trees were of no value prior to the fire, why did the assessor the year after the fire drop the land values by 10 percent if it wasn't for the loss of value in the land due to the trees? Quite the contradictory statement that trees have no value. I believe that people purchase property in our area because of the trees. What do we have up here? People travel to Big Trees State Park. They come for the trees. In addition, land values are assessed based on market value, not on a view of burnt trees and mountains. Back in March of 2018, 10 to 12 property owners from the burnt area, D2, met with the assessor to discuss their unexplained increase in property values. Leslie basically chalked it up to a computer glitch. Funny how the computer only focused on the burnt area. Perhaps the computer figured that a lot of the property owners would probably be involved in the lawsuit against PG&E and would be receiving a compensation for their losses. In addition, when property owners question their land values increasing, the response they receive from the department is, "You can file for an appeal." In March of this year, the State Board of Equalization was presented with 60 random parcels in the burn area and a few from outside the burn area. The majority of those 60 parcels, 70 percent of them, had unexplained increases. Within the last three years, some of the land and structure values in D2 have doubled. The real estate market does not follow suit with this pattern. In April of this year, another meeting at State Board of Equalization with former Senator Ted Gaines, his chief of staff Dave Titus, and Dana Jorgensen, state rep for Assemblyman Frank Bigelow resulted in great concern with what is happening in this county, especially in the burn area. In August of this year, concerns were brought up in front of the State Board of Equalization Taxpayers Bill of Rights hearing, an opportunity for taxpayers to engage with the elected board and discuss their concerns about property tax issues. I am going to stop there so that the rest of the presentation can be presented by Pamela.
Hi, good morning, Pamela Richmond, D2. These circumstances are currently being investigated at the state level. The state has offered twice to have state officials help Leslie with her 6,000 transfer backlog, which she has declined. Why have we lost all transparency in this department? Why are we here at this podium having to explain the lack of transparency? The taxation in D2 appears to be entirely random, save for one consistency, it's going up, particularly for those with a view due to the Butte Fire. Property owners are now receiving up to five years of supplemental and back taxes and are required to pay them within a six-month period. Some are being billed for years that they did not even own the property. An assessor cannot do that. When these property owners question the Assessor's Office, the response is the same. We have a backlog, and this is how we are handling it. The Assessor's job is to assess properties in the county, not to find creative ways to tax property owners on all their small outbuildings, dog houses, chicken coops, toolsheds, et cetera. Remember 8.06. The Assessor's job is not to try to change the state building code on shipping containers to tax them as a structure so that she can tax the people in this county, basically taxing us into oblivion. You, as the board, should have great concern as to what is really going on in this department. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, Ms. Cordo.
I too am sorrowed by the fact that the trees are not being replaced, they're not being thought about being replaced, and we have a responsibility to replace them because they provide oxygen for us to breathe. A lot of people make a big deal out of carbon sequestration, and plants need carbon in order to grow, and trees need carbon in order to grow. We need trees. We need them because they are the best potential of giving oxygen, especially the needled trees. I think that one of the reasons that the taxes are going up is because the people in the burned area created a situation where they had to research what to do because it was a new situation. And so, they've discovered that they can legally do things to raise taxes. And the reason that they need to do this is that we have a burgeoning county government. It's overflowing with workers pointed toward the pot industry, and they have to be paid somehow, and so, people's taxes are going to go up, their water bills are going to go up because the county's waters, people are subsidizing pot growing. In Taiwan, people are, young people especially, are fighting for their freedoms that they had, and they're losing, and they're now being shot. And now, we're going to be facing this in California and the United States. And when the Chinese take over, just watch how much pot you can grow, and watch how much pot you can smoke, and watch how much drugs you can take. Just watch.
Thank you. Is there other further public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, they'll be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. All board members, Ms. Mills.
Number seven.
Anybody else? Seeing none, staff? Public? Okay. Can I have a motion for the remainder?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Callaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five, zero.
Item seven is from the Administrative Office to approve the amended and restated joint exercise of powers agreement and adopt a resolution approving proposed revisions to the Golden State Finance Authority Joint Powers Agreement.
Supervisor Mills, you have any questions?
Yes, and looking at packet page 33, regarding Golden State Finance, there is a discussion there about PACE financing programs. I would like to be sure that we include in our resolution a clear statement that we do not support and will not support the use of the PACE program in Calaveras County. It would be probably to add number three on page 31, or page 32 of the wherethes to state that we will not support and do not condone the use of PACE in Calaveras County.
Supervisor Mills, I serve on the Golden State Finance Authority. There is nothing in this document that requires this county to participate in PACE. Thirty-four out of 35 counties in this state have already approved this, not all of them are PACE members, so to your concern about this including PACE, it doesn't apply to us. So, I don't know why we'd want to put a letter in there.
I looked into this because, you know, upon first reading it, I was, you know, I was here last year when the county made a decision to remove PACE, so at that point, we already have it, voted on by the board to not support PACE within our county or government-financed solar. And I would agree with Mr. Guaramendi that nowhere in here does it say that we support PACE. What it says in there is that the Golden State Finance Company is, you know, also has oversight over PACE, and it was addressed when you, as a board, voted against PACE last year.
Staff, have anything they want to add? Very well, public comment.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors, staff, Tim Uderzis on behalf of the Association of Realtors. In reviewing the packet for item number seven, there was references to PACE, but Mr. Stopper's already mentioned. We just want to ensure that this doesn't reopen the door for PACE loans to be sold to private individuals for solar upgrades. If you remember back 18 to 24 months ago when we appeared before you, you had a staff report that told you that in the few short years PACE was functioning in the county, that we already had one-third of those homeowners in default. So, if you're using the JPA to finance infrastructure within the county to address your homeless issue, we get that, we have no issue with it. We just want to make sure this doesn't reopen the door to have these PACE loans sold to individuals. So, thank you.
Next, public comment. Mr. Moore.
I'm Will Moore from District 5, and I have to admit, I didn't read the agenda packet, and I don't know what PACE is. Is there a way someone could explain it?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Further discussion on this item or motion?
The only purpose, Chair, in pulling this was to maybe to make a clear statement within the resolution about our previous stand on PACE, and that I was simply asking to have that statement included in the resolution so that there's clarity in that document of our stand on the PACE program.
Thank you. Board, is there any interest on this board, including that statement regarding our stand on PACE in this motion?
I don't, I don't think it hurts anything to add it in there. I mean, just...
The only thing, I'm sorry, I cut you off, supervisor. My apologies.
Go on.
My only thing is, we have 34 out of 35 counties in this state that have approved this without adding in our own commentary or narrative. I don't think we gain anything except looking like, you know, we wanted to stick it in someone's eye for no positive outcome. So, there's a poll Supervisor Mills put forward to add that letter.
Let's go down the line. Supervisor Stopper?
I'm comfortable with it as it is for the fact that, you know, it was addressed with the resolution last year when the county got rid of PACE.
Supervisor Toffenali?
I feel comfortable with what we went through last year and the year before, and we dealt with it, so...
Supervisor Callaway?
Leave it as presented.
I agree, and I voted against PACE when we brought it forward last time. So, is there, so that fails, is there a motion to move it forward as it is?
I will move the item.
Moved by Supervisor Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenali. I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Aye, zero.
Item eight is from the Administrative Office to adopt a resolution making a finding of public benefit and waiving certain fees for Habitat of Humanity for Calaveras.
Thank you. Good morning. I appreciate your concern in this resolution. Habitat this year, over the next 26 months, our plan is to build three affordable homes in Calaveras County, and we have dozens of repairs that we're planning as well. Waiving the fees, the inspections, the permits is a big help, and the public benefit is pretty clear with the housing elements, the affordable housing issues is prevalent, and just about every governing body that I know considers this a public benefit. So, I appreciate your consideration, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Mills?
You actually work with Area 12 on repair program?
We do. That's a, that's a, it's a very small, compared to what we do, it's a very small part of what we do, but we do work with them, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Very well, public comment on this item? Terry?
Good morning again, District 2. I hope that you will work with these folks because, you know, we like to help our neighbors, a helping hand, a hand up, but what about the Butte Fire people? What are you going to do for them to help them build a house? Just put that out there. Do support these folks. I think what they do is amazing, everybody should have a roof over their head, God bless them. But what about the Butte Fire folks? You guys have forgotten about us. You go up Highway 4 if you want to go to see the scenery, the big trees, or the snow, or whatever. You go through Valley Springs to get up here, you go through Copper. Nobody drives through District 2, do they? Unless they're going home. You don't see all the camping trailers out there that we live in still, because we have been high, I mean, we're just out. When you read about the news articles on this stupid bankruptcy, they don't even mention Butte Fire. I go up to Sacramento and remind them, hey, we're still here. There's a thousand of us. So, please support them. It's an amazing program. But consider your neighbors that have lost everything, and are getting hammered by assessor, and then we want to try to rebuild. People have left this county when they found out how much it was going to cost to rebuild and what they were going to have to go through. They just left. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment on this item? Ms. Sanchez? Very well, bring it back to the board. Is there further discussion or a motion?
Yeah, I do have a question, because since Peter Habsin is sitting here. Wouldn't this help us with our housing element as well? The work that they do is contributing to meeting our goals.
Certainly. There are a number of policies in the housing element that talk about reducing or waiving fees for housing programs for specific income levels, and each year we're required to report to the state regarding meeting the regional housing needs assessment allocation. Housing constructed by Habitat typically meets, you know, one of those criteria, so yes, this would be beneficial to the county.
I didn't see it in the discussion summary, but I wanted to be sure that it's in the record, that they are helping us to meet those goals, and failing to meet those goals, there are some financial repercussions that would happen, so...
Every year, the state tries to link more and more programs to the RENA allocations, and so, yes, this would be beneficial to the county to assist Habitat to construct affordable housing in the county.
Thank you for your response.
Supervisor Miller?
We want to thank you for what you do for our community and the great steps you've take, moved forward, and, you know, it's a very small bite of a very big problem, and we appreciate your time. With that, I'll move this item.
We have a motion by Supervisor Stopper. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five, zero. Thank you.
Item nine is from the Administrative Office to receive an update on the emergency repairs to the boilers and related mechanical systems located at the adult detention facility, to make findings that an emergency continues to exist, and to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled board meeting pursuant to County Ordinance Title III, Chapter 3.29, bidding procedures for public projects, and Chapter 2.5, Emergency Contracting Procedures, Sections 22050 of the Public Contract Code. This requires a four-fifths vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Ms. Rich?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bonnie Rich Administration. On November 5th, I brought an item before the board, asking for the board to approve and authorize the CAO to enter into an emergency contract, excuse me, to enter into a contract with sundown controls for emergency repairs to the scullery and hot water boiler systems at the adult detention facility. Your board approved that item, the CAO executed the contract later that day. We issued the notice to proceed on the 6th, November the 6th. The project has been registered with DIR, work is underway. We anticipate that the work will be completed later this week, although the contractor has 14 calendar days to complete the work. I spoke with Patrick Martin, our facilities manager, this morning, and he confirmed that we are on track. I anticipate, I'm hopeful that I will be coming back before the board next Tuesday on the 19th to report that the work has been completed, and then return with a authorization, a request for the board to authorize a notice of completion on December the 10th. But so far, we are on schedule and no anticipated delays.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I remember in our discussion last week, our concern about TEATER and the use of TEATER funds for this. Is there another way that we could finance this? Is there another way that we could finance this?
The facility's budget is, the majority of it is general fund dollars, whether it's TEATER or just general fund. There are some funds, projects that are funded by certificates of participation, however, those have very restricted uses, so other than, not that I'm aware of Supervisor Mills at this time.
I'm just very concerned that we've got TEATER drained down to near nothing right now.
Yes.
And it isn't going to give us any room or any buffers for anything else that may happen in the course of the next, the rest of this budget cycle. I'm just very, very concerned. There's no amount listed here, by the way, to give us an idea of the cost, but I'm very concerned that we would want to use TEATER as our option here rather than just go directly to general fund.
So, let me retract that statement. There may be another option, and while the finance section did not include the $28,846 amount for the contract, the draft contract was attached, or the contract was attached for the November fifth item. I apologize that the finance section did not include that. There is a small amount of funds in a special revenue fund for emergency repairs that we could, I can work with the CAO to look into using those funds. There's limited funds. My understanding is that fund was put into place back in about two thousand fifteen, when a presentation was made before the board on the condition of the facilities on the, at the main government campus. But there is a possibility that I could pull from that fund to pay for these costs.
It's just my opinion on it, and I'm sure the rest of the board's going to have to weigh in, but I would rather that the money come from there than come from TEATER the way it's set up right now.
Okay.
That's all I have. Supervisor Stoppa?
All the options are general fund.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
All the options are underneath the general fund for financing.
No, as I mentioned, we could dip into a limited special revenue fund that is set aside just for emergency facility unanticipated repairs.
Okay.
That, which is a, yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, I believe there's another option. I believe we have capital left in the account for the construction of the jail itself. There was like two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars left in there.
For the jail demolition?
For the jail construction that we had, the bond measure account that we constructed the jail with, and since this has to do with the jail, and still my contention has to do with Kitchell, that we could probably tie those funds in to use those funds for this and not tap into any special funds or any of the maintenance funds that we're using through Patrick's budget to make these repairs, and not only make these repairs, but probably replace the boiler that needs to be replaced eventually, because the repairs we're making, obviously, are repairs, and it's my opinion that this needs to be completely replaced. But there is about two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars left in that account, and since it's jail-related, I think we should be able to use that money.
I would ask that the board let me work with the CAO to identify funding options, and we can report that back next Tuesday.
The item's been approved as far as the budget. We can bring it back as we close it out with a secondary recommendation that can be adopted then, but in that, in the action that was taken last Tuesday, there was, was a budget, so we'd have to bring it back again with, for a different alternative.
Well, I would, I would prefer to keep the things to do with the jail and Kitchell and everything else into a single area where we're not grabbing from different places. We've got all of those funding activities, those repairs, those modifications, or whatever adjustments that we've done, all in one, one general account location, and if there's any future discussion with Kitchell about it, it's very easy for us to then just, here it is. It just makes it a lot simpler. So, I fully agree with the concept of keeping all of the jail work in a single account area so that it's very easy for everybody to look at it and see it and understand it.
Very well, so there seems to be some, Supervisor Stoppa?
You know, Supervisor Toffenelli has a very good point, and that falls within the confines of the restricted funds as they're set forth with the bond for the jail. I think that was Measure J. That's, I think it makes sense, as long as that money's in there, as, and I'm sure it is, because I'm sure Mr. Toffenelli did his homework on it, that, that makes more sense than anything else right now.
Okay, so it seems, I'm sensing a consensus to, when we bring this back next week, talk about the budget item and where the funds should be coming from. I was not aware of that fund either, most things we need to run to ground. You know, is that, is general consensus of the board, we'd like more information specifically around this? Supervisor Calaway? Okay. Very well.
Do you need, do you need a vote today of any type, or can this come back next Tuesday for?
The action before you today is, yes, I do need a vote. I need, the, the purpose of returning to the board under Public Contract Code is for the board to review that an emergency still exists. It provides the opportunity for staff to give you an update of where we are with the repairs, so I do need the board to approve this item.
So, the only thing we will do next week is just come back with how that finance is going to look?
And a status update, and hopefully that update will be that the work has been completed.
We need public comment? Yes, we do. Public comment on this item? Mr. Scala?
Good morning. Al Scala, Taxpayer Association. There may be a fourth alternative. We have a new facility. We hired consultants to design it under contract who have errors and omissions insurance. We've hired a contractor, and under that contract is similar provisions for errors that the contractor makes, that they be responsible for that, and then there's always a possibility that the contract was modified by the county in such a way that the problem was created, and that is not the responsibility of the architect, or a designer, or the contractor. In that case, county's responsible. Now, doesn't it make sense that we ask the, we have our legal people review this, to actually read the contracts with the architect and with the contractor, and see if, if the area responsibility for payment or correction of a, of a problem is really their responsibility? If it is, you don't have to go to a budget item. The money would be paid by those responsible. That's what they have insurance for. Makes sense? Thank you.
Thank you. The public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back further to the board.
Will there need to be any amendment to the way this is proposed, other than for us to just do a motion as it sits? We can, we can bring it back with another budget item next time with?
With that?
If so, so moved.
Certifying the ongoing emergency and emergency work is continuing, and we'll bring an update for the budget, but as is, is appropriate for now.
All right, I mean, assuming that we've got these...
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, move, motion by Supervisor Stoppa, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carries five, zero.
Item ten is from the Planning Department to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution certifying the environmental impact report, adopting sequa findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and adopting the Calaveras County General Plan.
Thank you. I am opening a public hearing. At our vote, the public hearing will be closed automatically. Mr. Mauer?
Good morning. Peter Mauer, Planning Director. With me is Chris Stiles from our outside council, Council, Remi Moose Manley, Julie Moss Lewis, have been intimately involved in this process for as long as I've been with the county, for over five and a half years now. As you're all well aware, this has been a very long process, starting back in two thousand six, been through numerous planning directors, numerous iterations of this board. This is a momentous day to be finally at the point where we are maybe adopting this general plan, and I'm hoping that's going to happen today. We went through many, many months of public hearings, working with the Planning Commission, and then before the board, to develop a plan, and it is an evolutionary process of, here's an idea that the planning staff and its consultants had come up with, the Planning Commission reviewed some of these policies, made modifications to that. We then went through an EIR process where the public was able to weigh in. We looked at the environmental effects of the various policies. Policies were then modified as a result of that analysis and the public comments, and then subsequent round of hearings tweaked those policies further. So, it's been a very, very long, involved process to get to the point where we're at today. I can assure you that not everyone is happy. There are people that don't like some of the policies, they don't go far enough in their position in protecting the environment, or they go too far in taking away property rights. A general plan, you know, community-level general plan, is a document of compromise. You're looking at the overall benefit of the county, and while not everyone may be happy, you know, we're looking at the, the full spectrum of, you know, community issues, community positions, and trying to strike that compromise, moving the county in the direction that we want to do, where we want to go. The other thing I want to emphasize is, this is a plan, and a plan can be changed, and it should be changed. I think that the, the problem with general plans across the state is if, you know, we get through the process, phew, we're finally done, and we don't think about it for another ten or fifteen years, and then someone says, you know, I think our general plan's out of date, let's start over again. I would propose that, in fact, there is a policy in our plan that says, we're going to come back on a regular basis, every year or two, and look at the plan and see how it's doing. Are we going in the direction that we want to go? Are there demographic changes that say we need to modify our plan? It's like a business plan. You don't open a business saying, here's my plan, I'm going to run my business, and then you don't take stock of what you do every year. Are you making money in your, you know, with your business? Do I need to change things? Or is there a market change that says, what I, you know, the widgets I want to sell are no longer selling, I need to sell something different? We should treat our general plan in the same way. Is it getting us to where we want to be, given the factors, economic factors, population growth factors, environmental factors that we need to consider to make our county a healthy, viable community in which to live and grow and develop an economy that supports its community? I think we've reached a good compromise here. Again, you'll hear from people that are not satisfied, they didn't get everything they want, and we have the ability to go back and look at that again in the future, and particularly if we see changes in growth, that suddenly we see an increase in population, and we need to accommodate more growth, the, you know, we have another disaster like the Butte Fire, hopefully that doesn't happen again, but we have to accommodate, you know, account for that, you know. What do we do with, with those kinds of circumstances that we can't even think of today? And who would have thought back in two thousand six when we started this process, that in two thousand eight, the market would, you know, the bottom would fall out of the market, and suddenly housing development would crash? And we really haven't recovered from that. You know, for the longest time, we were in negative population growth. We've just turned around in the last couple of years to look at, you know, we're seeing an increase in population, but it's very small. The amount of growth that the state is projected for the county has diminished from when we, when I started this, this process, and so those changes will be occurring all the time, and we will need to go back and look at those changes and adjust the plan as necessary. But right now, I think we've reached a very good compromise, so I would recommend that the board take the action as, as proposed to you. This is a result of the two days of hearings that you held in July, where you went through element by element, made modifications to the policy and implementation language, made modifications to the land use map, and that's all I can say at this point in time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those, and Chris and Julie are here to help as well, and recommend that you take the action as suggested in the agenda item.
Supervisor Stoppa? You have questions?
Not really. I just, you know, I do agree with you that this should, you know, no matter the outcome of the end of the day today, should always be a work in progress. The world is fluid. Things change from year to year, and we should, we, we should keep up with that change to a certain point, and, you know, it's what part of the setback was with trying to get this updated at this time, was that part, wasn't part of the process in the past. There, there is a lot of compromise in there. I do agree. Something that I've said in the past is, you know, you, you find a bit of success in a room making a judgment on something when, when everyone leaves a little bit mad at you, because no one got exactly what they wanted. That's compromise. And with that, you know, I, I really appreciate all the work you put into it, Peter. You know, there's honestly no silver bullet when it comes to the, this type of situation, you know? If you do find one, please present it to me so I can study it, and we'll move forward with that. I'll leave it to a public comment and everything else.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I think having sat through a number of the Planning Commission hearings in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, I know Supervisor Stoppa was also involved at that time, they were going through it not just line by line, but times word by word. It was a very detailed exercise, and almost a heroic exercise on their part, to want to take as much time as they took with each piece of it. It was, it was amazing to watch, and, and I think that our county needs to be very proud of their effort that they put into it. It wasn't as though they were rubber stamping anything. They sometimes had some very terse discussions amongst each other, and I just want to be sure that everybody understands that, and, and how much the county should appreciate, and I know this board is probably appreciative of the work that they put into it. Do I consider this to be the best general plan? There's things on it that are totally distasteful, but at the same time, we need to have a starting point, this will be a starting point for the future of this, of this county. These community plans in Valley Springs and Copperopolis are a critical element to, to that, and creating those visions in those, I think those two areas that really have the most potential for growth into the future, and how would that growth look? But these communities need to be totally engaged in, in the visions for their own communities. I struggle, for instance, in Copperopolis with, if I put in, if we, if we actually do build out the sixteen hundred homes that are potentially on development agreement now, where am I going to put commercial? Am I looking at another potential grocery store? What other shopping areas? You know, where's the C zones? Where are the M zones in Copperopolis? It's limited, very limited, and that, that should be a great concern, too, and as we talk about the community plans, how do we start to make those accommodations so we don't continue to drive people to Shop and Snore, or Jackson, or any other community? How do we keep them home? So, this general plan is also going, and I know that I left CAO a page of all of the changes, the required specific actions that this general plan, when it's adopted, will really require our, our staff to just go into overdrive. There's over a hundred specific actions, including modifying ordinances and creating new findings and studies, et cetera. If anyone would like to see that list, I was just amazed to see how much we were really, the workload we were going to put on you and the admin office and everybody else to try to accommodate those changes. SB thirty-two, as anybody who's looked at it knows, it just is that one area that I just can't get my head around. The idea of telling you that you can't put... The idea of telling you that you can't put natural or propane gas to your house after 2030 in Calaveras County or California makes no sense, considering what's going on with PG&E. So it's just that one spot that just kind of rubs me a little bit wrong. And I look forward to the public comment. I will have more comments about Copperopolis here before we vote. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for bringing up, I failed to mention, the amount of work that the Planning Commission put into this. They really went above and beyond the call of duty. Many, many special hearings, let alone the hours of time that they spent at home reviewing the documents. So they really deserve recognition for their hard work in bringing it to this point as well.
So I want to personally thank my own Planning Commissioner, Kelly Worcester, for not, not bailing on us. It was, it was amazing, some of the insights that he alone provided in this document, and I'm, I want to be sure that he is acknowledged and, and respect for the amount of work that he himself had put into it.
Very well. Supervisor Stoppa, did you have something else? Very well, we'll move to public comment. I think everybody knows the rules. There is a three-minute limit. If you line up, it moves quicker. Mike, lead us off.
Mike Falby, District 2. Props to Mr. Maurer and his staff for producing this document. I take offense with Mr. Mills' statement about congratulating Valley Springs and Copper on their community plans, and the thousands of hours that people put into coming up with these community plans, when in fact, there were communities, you can correct me, I'm sure I'm wrong, but there were many, quite a few communities in District 2 who put in thousands and thousands of hours at the behest of our supervisor and this Board, previous Board, into coming up with community plans, which were just axed without any concern about us, and what the hours we'd put in to our community plans. Our community plans were ignored, and we were told, nice try, catch you next time. That was a slap in the face to the people that put in all these hours, and then we were ultimately just told, go home. There's more than just Valley Springs and Copperopolis that have, that should have community plans. So I take offense with that. My second statement is, it's 16 years since this started, 2013?
13.
Or, excuse me, 2003? We're coming up with this general plan, and all the people that were involved with this process over this past decade-plus, you'd think there'd be a celebration here. You'd think this place would be packed. But you know what? The county government has beaten the common citizen's concern with the general plan. They've beaten it into submission. There's a dozen people here, maybe 14, that are concerned about the general plan. This place should be packed, with people that are concerned about our general plan or are celebrating its passage. But instead, we have the same cast of characters, because this county has beaten, and I speak for myself on this, it's beaten my concern with the general plan into submission. I don't care anymore, because of all the work that was put in by a lot of individuals, that was just ultimately ignored. So pass it, it's great, we have it. Again, props to Mr. Maurer and his, his office, but there were, yes, there are a lot of people that are upset with it, and you've beaten our care for it into submission. So congratulations, you win.
Next speaker.
Good morning, Chairman, and fellow Board members, not Commissioners, Board members. My name is Diane Kinderman, with the law firm of Abbott and Kinderman, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of both the Brunker family, as well as the Murphy families. I submitted a letter on Friday regarding our requests. Yet, the general plan definitely is a work of art, and I appreciate all the work staff has done on it, as well, as do my clients, but we're still here requesting, asking that you look through the prism of resource production again, and look at these two sets of properties, and remove them from the resource production, maintain the status quo with the proposed designations that we've identified in the letter, and we request that you do that today, and that would not in any way inhibit your ability to approve the general plan this morning, as you so desire to do. It can be done with a simple swipe of a pen on the approval resolution. And in the letter, what we've requested is that the Brunker properties be designated, they maintain the status quo, be designated instead of the FSS-5, is what it was previously, the closest thing to it, is the RTB. And instead of resource production, we requested it be designated RTB. And as to the Murphy family, when we were drafting the letter, they had requested that it be designated, theirs is also the FSFR-5. They had requested working lands, because there's a small portion of their property that was working lands, but in reality, they too would appreciate having the RTB designation, because that is identical, the identical designation to what it had been previously, in lieu of the resource production. My firm did an analysis of these designations under SEQA, using the assumptions that staff used, and we concluded that there's maybe a 1.2% change with these different designations in terms of growth potential. So that is not significant in terms of SEQA. So we've created a record here, both in terms of the numbers and the different SEQA impact categories, including those that were done qualitatively, and those categories that were analyzed quantitatively. And it's in the letter here, and it would provide the evidence to support our requested change in a record, and it's an argument, and there are numbers that we would stand by if you were challenged on this particular issue. So with that, we request that you change, in lieu of the resource production on all of these properties, that it instead be the RTB Rural Transition B. There any questions? No.
Thank you, Ms. Kinderman.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Mr. Thomas?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and other Supervisors. My name is Russ Thomas, former Supervisor. I was kind of in the wings in 2006 when this started, and then on the Board from 2007 to '10. My participation was, was kind of, I don't know, I didn't get rewarded by, by having a plan adopted quite as fast as Marita, and I thought that it might be, but anyway, here we are. And I think I've got a marching band outside, for those who think that the room should be, should be full, but, or maybe I should sing praises or something. But I was interested in Mr. Maurer's observation that you cannot let this, this achievement, if it gets approved today, you can't let it languish. The work that needs to be done, needs to have a methodology adopted for that. And I've spoken with various people here about what I experienced in Stanislaus County when I lived there, about a general plan update committee that is always in place. Two members of the Board of Supervisors, two members of the Planning Commission, and representatives of the factions that are involved in a particular element that wants to be readdressed. If you've got seven or eight elements of the general plan, I would submit to you that next week, you should establish that committee, and identify what is the particular element that needs the most attention. And don't let it languish for 10 years, like Mr. Maurer said might happen. That's, that's the only way that you're going to keep the document fresh, and approve to the citizens of the county that you're serious about wanting to keep the document fresh. So anyway, those are my comments. I'll give you my congratulations in advance for, for having come this far, and hopefully you will approve it. Like Ms. Kinderman has said, there are some particularly problematic assumptions that have been made on those two pieces of property that I think are really quite unfortunate, that if it's as easy as she says to fix that today, then you should do it. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Calle?
Good morning, again. Al Calle, Taxpayer Association. Boy, what a lot of work done by everybody, in particular Peter. There's several positive suggestions. When we have a compromise, if the compromise is between a perfect plan and a highly flawed plan, then the compromise is a partially flawed plan. Okay, so if we're dealing with a partially flawed plan, the suggestions that were made by Peter and by others, that this should be reviewed very closely and periodically, maybe annually, and to that, in that direction, that makes, really makes sense. Because if your purpose for existence as government, as government, is to protect the rights of life, liberty, and property of the citizens, which is your real purpose, then you have to respect the property rights of the citizens in the county. It's hard to avoid that. You can have 100, you can have 99% of the people vote to take money from the other 1%, it doesn't make it right, and that's why we have a republic, and not a democracy. Okay, so it looks like there's been some steps taken in the right direction already. I understand the building, a building official has a committee, I understand maybe 10 people, including some Supervisors, that are going to review the application of laws on the people that, that are subject to those laws. And I think the same thing, if was established under the Planning Department, could do the same thing, is to get feedback from the industry that's involved with this, with, from property owners, as to what the effect of this general plan is on their existence and on their rights. And as we get that feedback, we can periodically modify the general plan to make it more property rights-friendly, more freedom-friendly. To me, that makes sense. And again, my compliments to all the people who worked so hard on this general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corder?
I do not believe that the general plan has direction for replacing the lost trees that are impacted, not only from the burn scar, but from PG&E wholesale slaughter of the trees along the county lines, fence lines. There's been no allowance for helping those at the burn scar area to replace their lost homes with eased regulation and taxes. No remorse for trying to skirt Proposition 13 in every possible way. No recognition of animal and plant life, and the repercussions to them from not encouraging their natural home safety. And that would include all the pot grows that have not been cleaned up. And I wonder what will happen to these people? Are they going to just take their land and their home, or whatever they've got there? Is that going to be an excuse to plump up the county coffers? It doesn't seem quite right. No recognition of the wholesale slaughter of trees or on the county property, particularly along PG&E lines. No bottom line to the impact that pot has had on our county, and continues to have. Refusal to acknowledge those costs socially and in every other way. No recognition that pot has been growing, and no enforcement of thousands of pot plots have not been addressed. Expecting the general public to hire lawyers to deal with the insanity involved with pot cultivation. No recognition that we are heading to a Gestapo state.
Thank you. Speaker?
Hello, Board members. I'm Chester Murphy, and I represent the Murphy property here, and we've, I just want to mention a couple of things on it. We've owned it since 1915. It was Chester Murphy, who'd be my grandfather, and his brother Walt Murphy, who was father to Doris Murphy-Barger, and a lot of people knew Dick and Doris Barger. But anyway, since 1968, Diamond 20 has been next to us. We've had the same zoning, and they had planned for it to be the next phase, and got four roads dead into it. We've had fiber optics put into it, and pool boxes, will serve, Calaveras telephone. We've got a major intersection that Caltrans put in. They also had had the engineering for Overpass, but in there about 10 years ago, Calaveras County Water District had NLT engineering, and they were going to bring water in to the Diamond 20. They were also going to serve our property as well. So I hope you will consider, you know, zoning our general plan designation rural transitional. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Tom Vasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. Before I get started, I just want to say one thing. Applying on the general plan update land use map, RTA or RTB land use designations on land not so developed would be inconsistent with the general plan update. You can ask me questions later if you want to. But on this occasion, we at the CPC would like to express our gratitude to people who participated in this general plan update process, to promote the health, the safety, and the well-being of the good people of Calaveras County. We thank then Acting Planning Director Bob Selman, who in 2006 made the update of the 1996 general plan his department's top priority. We thank that Board for seeing the need for a comprehensive and lawful general plan update. We thank the Community Development Director Stephanie Moreno, and the Calaveras Council of Governments, who partnered to complete a community plan for Valley Springs, despite the fact that this Board of Supervisors and its GPU ultimately rejected all the community plans for Valley Springs. We thank the Minter Harnish Consultants for their work in 2006 to identify the flaws that needed correction in the 1996 general plan, even though this Board of Supervisors and its GPU ultimately fails to correct those flaws. We thank Minter Harnish for listening to hundreds of people at workshops to identify in 2008 the key issues the county needed to address in the GPU, even though this Board of Supervisors and its GPU would ultimately defer addressing those issues indefinitely. We thank Minter Harnish for their efforts through 2011 to prepare a draft general plan, even though it would ultimately be rejected by the Board of Supervisors and never be seen by the public. We thank the Agriculture Coalition for crafting a mitigation measure to help conserve resource production land for the future, even though this Board of Supervisors and its GPU would ultimately reject that mitigation measure. We thank CCWD and the many community members who collaborated, despite ideological differences, to produce the water element, even though it was ultimately rejected by the Board of Supervisors. We thank the Consultants who drafted the energy element, even though it was ultimately rejected by the Board of Supervisors. We thank the Calaveras Economic Development Company for working with the CPC to promote the STARS project, even though this Board of Supervisors and its GPU ultimately rejected the suggestion. Finally, we would like to thank the county's current staff and consultants, who crafted immediately applicable mitigation measures for stream site setbacks and oak woodlands, even though this Board of Supervisors and its GPU ultimately rejected those measures. As we at the CPC move forward, we remain loyal to the hopes of those who work so hard to convert into reality the simple dreams of good people. We will follow that road wherever it leads. Thank you.
Further public comment. Seeing none, I will close public
I'll lead off. Of course, I'm, I'm going to be primarily concerned about Copperopolis and the vision for what is the potential in Copperopolis, having met with a local bank here just recently, and not so much trying to sell a specific developer's project, but to sell the basin itself and its future potential as the area that could be the most easily to handle growth in the future due to its infrastructure and its capacity. I am intimately concerned about traffic circulation down there, about the ability to move traffic in emergency situations for evacuation purposes, knowing that we're limited in how quickly we can move across the Burns Ferry Bridge, how quickly we could evacuate northbound into probably an existing fire zone on Highway 4. That has to be at some point dealt with. Remember that Oak Canyon Ranch was in the project list at the time the general plan was being done. It's now off the list. There's 33, 3400 homes that were in the system that are now out. So I don't see that the Brunker or Murphy properties literally are creating any more of a problem. I think they're helping to solve a problem. If we want to get southbound and provide another way of getting southbound to 108, and also help Tooluma County, I had a breakfast with Supervisor Rodifer from Tooluma County yesterday morning over this very issue of how do these two counties work together to solve some of these, these issues of transportation or moving people around. There has to be another way. And I think that having the ability to not close off or to not make it so difficult to provide that additional benefit into that basin can't be ignored. I, I'm very concerned about the, the intersection. Caltrans spent a lot of money, Mr. Murphy, on that intersection down there by the double D. And that, knowing that they knew that there would be potentials at some point in the future for that, that growth to occur, that they know something we don't know. Many, many people might not be aware, but the Economic Development Company, there's two members sitting in the room today that were on that Economic Development Company over the last years. I was one of them. And I was also on CCWD as a director at the time the water element was put together. So to say this board rejected, I can tell you very clearly, I was very involved in it back then. I would like to ask the board for a specific action today, and if, if they are amiable to it, to place the Murphy Ranch properties and the Brunker properties back into, or get it out of the resource production, and put it into some form of working land or rural transition zoning, if the board is amiable to do it. If they're not, then I would ask that it be, become a priority of this board to do it, and not leave it to the individual property owners to bear that effort, and to be able to do that, hopefully within the next six months if we adopt. Because getting this plan adopted has become a priority for this board. So if it's, if it's something that the board feels that they can do today, if they can't, that maybe they would agree to doing it sometime in the very near future, but it'd be an action from this board as an update to the general plan, rather than to put that on us, on the developer. So I would ask for a poll, phone call for a question to see if the board is amiable to placing these two properties out of resource production and in either rural transition or working lands at this time.
So I will do this poll in two parts. First one will be, do we want to pull this and do this today? Second one will be, is this a priority for the board in the near future? Close enough? So let's start with question one. Does anybody want to pull this and do this work today? Supervisor Stoppa?
I, I've spoke out for the fact that those have both been in, zoned as such in the past, and we're, we've worked backwards on it. I, I'm in favor of working on it.
Today?
Sure, yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
Mr. Maurer, Ms. Kinderman said that we could make the changes with the wave of a pen. I don't see how we can make those changes without the document going back for analysis. Could you please clarify her comments?
Well, I would be concerned about just making that change without looking at what the potential impacts of that change are. I know that in Ms. Kinderman's letter, she had, you know, her analysis was that it would have minimal effect, it would not affect the, the general plan EIR. I have not done that analysis myself, and I would feel more comfortable in order to do that and bring something back to you, saying yes or no, we agree or disagree. I, I don't have that analysis in front of me, so I couldn't tell you today.
Mr. Chair, I can support making changes to what is before us today. If Supervisor Mills would like to consider it at a later date under a general plan amendment that could be initiated by the board, I'd be open to listening to the discussion and the impacts of it, but not to make changes today.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thirteen years, we're here today. We had this discussion back in July, and the board voted at that time to go forward. As is, if we'd have made the decision then that we're talking about now, we would have that incorporated today before us. We're talking about delaying this again for this same two properties. And I understand, because we had the long discussion on it, and I was one of the ones that voted to, to change the designation on it, but it failed on a 3-2 vote, I think, at the time. My opinion at this time is, we're here, we're at this point where it's before us after 13 years. And yes, I remember in 2008, Town Hall here in San Andreas completely full of people. Rita, you were there, you remember. More than once we had it. That, put aside, I, I would be in favor of moving forward today with what we have before us. And then there's going to be a time for amendments that we can bring this back. I don't think there's any rush, I don't think there's any plans for immediate development on these properties immediately. It's been a long time for them to get to where they were Mr. Murphy had brought up. So I would be in favor of moving forward today, and then bringing back as soon as we can for an amendment, not only for those properties, but looking at the Valley Springs and Copper community plans at that time also.
Very well. I concur with Supervisor Callaway, so we will not, to the majority 3-2, we will not be taking that item up today. Second item to be pulled on was, does this, does the board want to declare the Murphy Ranch and the Brunker Ranch a priority in this next year? Is that correct, or would you like to modify that anyways, Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, I, and also I concur with Supervisor Toffenelli in that it will, if we put the, if the board is not amiable to do it now, that we could put this off to the six-month point and saying, we're going to do a general plan update as a board, and relook at some of these at that point. It wouldn't then be their work to do to make that amendment happen. But it will, as he's saying, will give us a chance to look at our community plans in Copperopolis and Valley Springs specifically, and try to get some clear vision statements put together that will help to support. Because again, Oak Canyon is off the table. To me, that's, that's huge in terms of what is taken off the table. But I think that we, we do need to have that community plan. If we're not going to do it now, we need to have those community plans ready to go and be a part of that conversation at that time. So that's generally what I'm looking for, is to create a priority.
Let me see if I could condense that a little bit. So within a six-month or reasonable time period, we'll take a look at some of this?
Sir, if I may interject?
Go for it.
I completely support coming back to it myself. It would coinc, you know, six month is kind of a little defining when we haven't even started the Copperopolis community plan. So I think it should somewhat coincide with the Copperopolis community plan. That way, that way it can be all condensed into one, one general idea. And that way, if there's any changes or any more
Adjustments?
Adjustments with, or having a delve into the environmental impacts of it in depth, we can conglomerate all that into one, one analysis at the same time. I think breaking it up even further than that would be an issue.
Okay, so your point is, let's bring it back, we bring back Copper community plan. More straightforward?
I would support that.
Supervisor Stoppa, supporting that?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
I'll agree with that too. I'm glad we're doing that. I hate to have this board initiate a, a study on a piece of property for an individual. It's been 50 years that Double D's been there. I mean, it's nice to fit in with the rest of it.
And it's important too to understand just what all of the vision for Copperopolis is as well. That all has to fit together. So I appreciate this board's support in making this a priority.
Very well. Other comments on the general plan? Are the, are the EIR, or any of the items on this agenda item? Anybody like to make a statement before we start calling the vote? Supervisor Callaway?
I really feel honored to be happy to be part of this at this point in time. And having gone to almost every single meeting, community plan meeting, and of course, as a board member, general plan meeting. This general plan and the community plans are really a balancing act of interest. Mike got up and said he didn't have anything in here on, on D2 and their community plans, and I'm looking and thinking,
They're all in there.
Whoa, they're in there. But, you know, where's District 3 community plans? They've been 86th from this, of which I had a hard time with. But, you know, we'll move forward. And I think as we move forward, what I have been impressed with in the plan and from the staff is their commitment for us to look at the general plan and incremental timeframes, so we're not stuck in the 15-year, 13-year position as we have been now. It was interesting to see Mr. Fazino sending us something from El Dorado County, where we have a leading expert here on El Dorado County. I like the fact of where we're going to go forward. The big complaint is the county's at a standstill because we don't have a community, a general plan. Well, today, we're going to have a general plan. And those people who are saying we can't move forward without it, you have it. So whatever the issues are, whatever your projects are, then let's move forward with them. I never felt the general plan held up any projects. But I know somewhat of an emotional issue for me today to have this plan before us. And I'd be very honored to have my name associated with this general plan. And having worked with Gary for years on it, and the prior board the last three or four years, and Russ. So all of us have a piece of it, of this plan, including Joyce Teckel. If I could kind of put her name on it, I put Joyce's name on it too, so. Oh, okay. Anyway, those are my comments.
Very well. Supervisors, others you like to make comment?
This has been a long time in common. And having sat through so many of those meetings and listened to the input, the amount of public input that's gone on this over the years, to say politics is a messy business is an understatement, but it is true. But it's important. It's important it be that way, because it allows everyone to express their views and express their opinions and be heard. And I don't, I can't say we haven't given more than enough opportunity for the public to be heard on this matter. But if we just simply say, we've done it, we can go put it on a shelf, and that's where it sits, we really haven't done a good job with it. And I, I hope that this board and the Planning Commission and anybody that sits here in the future considers this a priority to keep this as current as possible. There are going to be changes, and we have to accept those changes. But how they work, that's going to be up to the communities to decide. There's been two attempts at a community plan in Copperopolis. Both of them were rejected. Okay, there's no more excuses. Let's get it done. We're going to get it done today. And then we'll move on with the rest of the pieces to make this puzzle work, and make this whole county grow and be a vibrant community like it should be.
Thank you. Supervisor Stoppa?
There's been a lot of work for years. I mean, the, the work started prior when the last general plan was finished in the late 90s. You know, I think at that point, there was some realizations that, you know, we need to work forward on some more issues that were brought to light in the early 2000s. There are so many people that have a piece in this. You know, I, I can appreciate the different supervisors reflecting on their, their, their small parts of it. But this has been ongoing since 2006. There's multiple planning commissioners, there's multiple board members, there's multiple planning directors, staff. Community members have left, some have arrived. You know, things have changed significantly since the day we started, we started working through all this. It's something that needs to be done. It's, again, I say, I, there isn't anything that's perfect. 2016, I was integral part of getting the Rancho Calaveras community plan inserted at that time. Ms. Callaway is correct, the Copperopolis, the Valley Springs community plans were not part of the situation because, and Mr. Mills brings up the very reason that there was contradicting plans coming forward before that board and the commission at the time, and the board had waived the fact that they're too, too controversial at this time to move forward, that they wanted those left out, and then to come back to them at a later time, to, to be able to work forward on the rest of the general plan. But District 2's probably has the most community plans in there out of any district.
Over there.
Right, I believe so. Ms. Ms. Callaway's missing some, quite a few up Highway 4 from, from the general plan.
I might note, Valacita will never see a, a community plan. I don't like tar.
Valley Springs, you know, it is in Mr. Toffenelli's district. It is something that does lie close to my heart. I have a very small sliver of it in my community. But our communities are together. I mean, they, they don't stop from Rancho Calaveras into Valley Springs. And it's important that we do get that finished, and we do work forward on it. And we have started some meetings. I hope we can continue to work with the people from those communities to build on something and have it in the near future done and put up, put on there with a consensus on the issue. We'll never have 100% of people in agreement, but I think we should have a consensus on how we need to move forward the Valley how we need to move forward with the Valley Springs community plan.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
And just to touch base on that a little bit, Mr. Maurer, the, on your website, the link to Valley Springs community plan is up and running, and it's open for comments.
That's correct.
And it's been up for the last couple of weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, so have we, have we had any comments? Have you checked on it and see if anybody's chimed in on it at all?
I haven't checked recently.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that forward, that that is up. If you're listening and you're interested in that plan, please go to Mr. Maurer's Planning Department's website, click on this link to Valley Springs community plan, read it, put your comments in it. We're interested in your comments, as far as what you have a vision for in Valley Springs, and we will look at all comments. We will have another meeting, Town Hall meeting, with those comments in hand to go over them. Again, this has been 13 years. I've sat in, like Marina said, on many, many, many meetings. We had to almost start over at one point again, which delayed this plan for a number of years to this point. We've had a lot of people, I don't think the comment was beaten into submission, I think just the length of time of 13 years, when something is new and you're going forward, you're going to fill a room up with people. But as the time goes by, people lose interest in things, or don't have as much enthusiasm, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been 13 years, they're finally going to do it. But it hasn't lost the sense here at county level. In Peter's department, even the various planning department heads had as much enthusiasm going forward to get this thing done. Peter stuck it out, and I appreciate it. I appreciate your staff and all the work they've done. We've had a number of CAOs during the course of 13 years, and that affected a lot of it moving forward. But we're here now, today, and it's a historic moment for Calaveras County, and I agree, whether it has to be a policy issue, we need to bring back a policy that says the board will at least review this biannually or annually to keep this updated through all the state changes that we're mandated to do. It doesn't get to this point where we have to go through, rewrite it, and redo it for 13 years, is just an incredible amount of time. But I am, I'm looking forward to completing the Valley Springs community plan, bringing that back here, and having it reviewed by this board and adopted by this board. So with that.
Thank you. I wasn't going to make a statement, but, you know, judging by the pile of emails we got over the weekend, and literally gigabytes of data, I thought I would take the time and return the favor. First off, I want to start by thanking you, Peter, for your work on this. You have been a steady guide on this work. You led community groups, planning commission, and this board through the process, and I want to give you my sincere appreciation for your hard work on behalf of this county to make this happen. It's a remarkable achievement to bring us all together and get this thing done. I also want to thank you, Chris, and I want to thank you, Julie, for your work on this too. You guys have all, both been partners in helping us bring this through, and my personal gratitude to everybody. I want to thank the Planning Commission, that's already been done extensively, and I want to thank the volunteers and community leaders. Like Mike, I remember the community planning meetings where there are hundreds of people. This was three supervisors ago. So it's been a long time coming, and I want to thank everybody who participated in that. But I'm pleased and relieved that we'll pass this general plan update today. This process has extended for more than a decade, and has been the victim of changing priorities, staff turnover, board conflicts, and individuals and groups who have less interest in completing the project than they have in eternal delay, paying consultants, and political fights. I want to reiterate what I said in July when we passed this as a draft. The general plan update is not an elixir to all the county's problems. It gives us a roadmap, a map which we can adjust regularly, should we choose as the world changes. This is a guide. It's not, it doesn't dictate everything that we must do. I have been criticized publicly because I've chosen to advance progress over this never-ending debate. If we do not move ahead, we continue to live under the general plan that calls for us to increase our population by five times. Does anybody still think that that is a good idea, to live under that plan? While this project is not, this document is not perfect, it is a major improvement over where we stand currently today. By doing nothing, we continue to stay at risk. There are those that are going to be disappointed that we're closing this dysfunctional chapter in our history. They'll miss the eternal hand wringing and debate. But I think our citizens want us to do our job and to do this work, and that is what we are doing. There are others who would fight to the end, threatening to bankrupt our county through litigation if they don't get 100% of what they want. I will choose to sacrifice, they will choose to sacrifice the general welfare of all our citizens because their narrow goals were not achieved. I would ask these people to look at the aggregate good in the general plan update. Realize that in a democracy, we must make compromises and work to improve the document through dialogue and understanding, and not through useless litigation that in the end is only going to benefit the attorneys. To them I say, stop fighting, reset, and work with your county and fellow citizens, not against all of us. This document includes all the community plans in District Two that were approved by the Board of Supervisors. This document includes agricultural mitigation and preservation of our landscapes. This document reduces greenhouse gases and focuses growth where it is appropriate. This document allows our community to move forward, and for these reasons, I'm going to enthusiastically vote to support this general plan update. Is there a motion or further discussion?
Sir, so moved.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Callaway.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Too early for lunch, Russ. Peter, thank you. Julie, thank you. Your last item.
Can we take a five-minute break, Mr. Chair?
We've only got one more item, supervisor announcements, and we're out of here. So if you guys will sit for a few more minutes, we're done.
All right.
In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Supervisor Callaway, would you like to begin?
I'll be going on a fire break tour sponsored by 2Care on Thursday. I have been asked to talk with the grand jury on Friday, and
What time?
10:30.
Okay, because I'm 12:45.
Oh, okay. I wish they'd let you go first, then I could counteract everything you say. And a Lasco meeting on Monday evening.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I'll also be on that 2Care tour. Just want to give out a piece of history here. Everybody knows where the Big Trees State Park is in Calaveras County, and very familiar with it, but what they probably don't know, and you can look this up in history, is the South Grove of the Big Trees State Park was actually given to the state of California by the Pickering Lumber Company in the 1930s. Let me tell you, my mother's maiden name is Pickering. Okay? So to, but there was a trade that happened there. That wasn't strictly just a giving, there was a swap that occurred. But you'll note that the only place in California that has never had a devastating major wildland fire is the Stanislaw Canyon. The Stanislaw. It was because of the logging operations that the family did back in the 20s and 30s that has allowed it to be what it is today. It's important to understand that those practices that they did in the 20s and 30s still apply today. It is not clear-cutting, it is thinning, it is fuel reduction, and understanding how it all works. To that end, I was up at Mountain Counties last Friday, spoke with Senator Brian Dolly and many other members on that issue of forest land partnerships, solving our natural resource challenges together, and water conservation legislation framework update. The message of the Mountain Counties and our ability to provide safe, clean drinking water to the rest of the state is being heard in Southern California. The partnerships have been created through Aqua and many other efforts, and we are talking together on a regular basis of, it isn't just about the twin tunnels. It's about how can they help us to get that watershed, and the fire reduction, and the forest health in place to help all of us in the state of California. And I'm so glad and grateful that they're willing to have that conversation. It's not a them versus us anymore. It's, we're all in this state together, and we're going to work this out together. So I just wanted to let you know that that Friday program was very important, because we had people from Southern California in that meeting and discussing these very issues with us. So you'll note that it's no longer a twin tunnels, it's a single tunnel. And there's a possibility they meant, that may not ever need to happen if we can get this right. So the $10 billion that they're looking at to try to make that happen could easily be pushed forward from Southern California to help us, to help them. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Nothing that I spent county money on, sir.
Yeah. Supervisor Toffenelli?
I don't have anything to report that I spent county money on either. However, I want to bring up to the board that on Thursday the 14th, 10 o'clock, we have an ad hoc facilities meeting scheduled, so we will be reporting back to this board at the next meeting after that. So, okay?
Thank you. I have nothing to report. Staff, zero, and council clerk, the board, nothing. Therefore, this meeting stands adjourned.